Hello and welcome to Represent NYC Election Coverage. I'm Ben Max, your host and the executive editor of Gotham Gazette. Today, we're pleased to bring you a debate in the Democratic primary for City Council District Five, which includes much of Manhattan's Upper East Side, Yorkville, Lenox Hill, Carnegie Hill, as well as Roosevelt Island, Sutton Place in East Midtown, and parts of El Barrio in East Harlem. I will introduce you shortly to seven Democrats competing in the primary, the vote for which will occur in June, who are with us for today's debate. This race is part of the 2021 New York City election cycle, which is well underway and poised to be the most significant municipal election in decades. All of city government is on the ballot this year, and because so few incumbents are eligible to run for their current seats due to term limits, New Yorkers are electing many new office holders and the next roster of leadership for our city. There will be a new mayor of New York City elected here in 2021, as well as a new city controller, several new borough presidents, and many new city council members, including the representative for District Five in Manhattan. And that's not all that's on the ballot. A number of incumbents are eligible for and seeking reelection, including the city's public advocate, and there's a very crowded and competitive race for Manhattan District Attorney, and still more. Party primaries are set for June, and the general election in the fall will culminate on November 2nd. This is the first full set of municipal elections that will feature both early voting, as well as the new ranked choice voting system, which only applies to party primaries and special elections. And we explain ranked choice voting in a separate show, so go ahead and find that. But that means ranked choice voting is at play in this party primary. So this city election cycle has a lot on the line, raising the stakes for the decisions that you, the voter, will make. The next wave of city leadership will quite clearly help make or break the city's recovery from the devastation of the COVID-19 pandemic and its impacts on health, families, jobs, education, housing, and much more. New York City faced a number of crises even before the pandemic, of course, as well as myriad other challenges. So it's an important time of choosing here in New York City, and we're pleased to bring you this series of individual interviews and debates, including this one for City Council. We hope this and other debates and interviews will help you sort through your many choices and make an informed decision when it's time to vote. So let's get to today's debate among the candidates for City Council, a position that includes key responsibilities and powers around constituent services, local problem-solving, legislating, budgeting, making land use decisions, and much more. So joining me now by Zoom are seven Democratic candidates for City Council in District Five: Billy Freeland, Rebecca Lamorte, Kim Moscuratolo, Tricia Shimomura, Chris Sosa, Julie Menon, and Marco Tamiyo. Welcome, thank you all for being here. So briefly, the rules of this debate are: there's no opening statements. Most questions will allow the candidates about a minute and a half each to answer, plus time for some follow-ups or rebuttals if needed. I may ask some follow-up questions or offer some open discussion at my discretion. And candidates, please don't be surprised if I ask you to clarify something or provide an example or a specific on something you've mentioned. There will likely be a lightning round of yes, no, or short-answer questions toward the end of the debate, and there will be one-minute closing statements as we wrap up. All right, so let's get started. I'm going to alternate who starts each round, but we'll always go in the same order alphabetically by last name for the sake of simplicity. All right, so Billy, what specific qualifications and experiences can you cite that prepare you to become a City Council member? And what exactly would you highlight as accomplishments in the service of the public that you have in your background? Go ahead.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you, Manhattan Neighborhood Network, for bringing this debate together. So let me start with a couple of things that I'm most proud of. I'm incredibly proud of having served our community on Community Board Eight since 2018, where I've been a secretary and officer, elected by my colleagues three years in a row. The Community Board deals with the most local issues our city faces, and it's through the Community Board that not only have I learned every milk and cranny of our district, but it's given me the opportunity to stand side by side with my neighbors against developers who are trying to abuse our land use system, and standing side by side with my neighbors to build a transportation network and a network of open space and pedestrian space that works for us during this pandemic and beyond. It's through the Community Board where I've worked on issues like making sure the bike lane on Second Avenue is complete and safe for all of us. And look, you mentioned it in your opening, Ben, constituent services, solving local problems, I believe that's the most fundamental work of a City Council member. I buy into that Mayor LaGuardia quote, "There's no democratic or republican way of cleaning the streets." So for years, I've been serving my neighbors and working with constituents to help solve their problems. But I've also gotten a larger look at the injustices facing our city. As a lawyer, I've represented clients, for example, a client seeking within 40 repairs in housing court against NYCHA. I've represented clients who have been prosecuted unjustly under some of our most racist and discriminatory laws as a city. So I've seen firsthand the injustices in our city, whether it's housing, the criminal justice system. And I have a sense of what we need to do to tackle those problems. What I'm bringing to this race is not just my experience at the community level and as an attorney, but it's what we call "fresh ideas for a just recovery." It's a new deal for New York, and it's those ideas and those experiences that I believe best qualify me to be the next City Council member and to follow in the lead of Council Member Kalos and his transparency in office.
Thank you. Rebecca?
Thank you so much for having me here today. I really appreciate you putting this debate together. I'm running as a disabled New Yorker, a proud union member, labor advocate, community organizer, and Yorkville resident with a decade of legislative experience. I've been up in Albany, I've been down at City Hall, helping pass laws that protect union workers, that advance dignity in all work, that advance procurement reform. I'm really proud to have even during COVID last year passed a bill that languished in the New York State Legislature for 30 years around procurement reform and making sure that we have real value in the subsidies that we give to private developers to ensure we have good jobs. I'm proud to have been a part of the fight for 15. I'm proud to have coordinated the campaign for the Construction Safety Act. And here in our community, I'm proud to have served on Manhattan Community Board Eight as a secretary. I'm proud to have helped form an activist democratic club, the East River Democrats. I'm proud to be a co-founder of Upper East Side for Black Lives Matter, where I've been able to organize our community around defunding the police and supporting black lives here in New York and speaking truth to power on a lot of these issues. I'm also really proud to have fought for accessibility. In 2013, I was pushed on the sixth train, and my left leg was crushed in the gap between the train and the platform. It completely changed my life, and now it's made me want to change the life of every disabled New Yorker and bring about real disability justice and true inclusion. Even now, I'm petitioning the Campaign Finance Board to exempt language translation, accessibility, and American Sign Language interpretation costs, so we truly can have free and fair elections. So I have a wealth of experience to take.
And I said the alphabetical order just slightly off in the intro, so we're up next to Julie Menon. Go ahead, Julie.
Thank you so much, Ben, and thank you, MNN, for hosting this debate. So I've served as Commissioner of three New York City agencies and as a seven-year Community Board Chair. I'm also an attorney and an adjunct professor at Columbia, where I teach on New York City government. As Commissioner of Consumer Affairs, I launched the Paid Sick Leave Law, the Living Wage Law, the Freelances and Free Act. It instituted 25 reforms to lower fines that were crushing small businesses. As a seven-year Chair of the Community Board, I built three new schools, including the city's first green school. As Commissioner of Media and Entertainment, I created thousands of jobs in the city and oversaw a $9 billion sector for our city. And also created programs to address gender inequity. I negotiated the deal to bring the Grammys back, which brought over $200 million into our city, and launched Film Green, the nation's first municipal film sustainability program. As Director of the City Census, I directly took on Trump. We sued him. We won our citizenship case at the U.S. Supreme Court, and I built the city's first census office, where we beat almost every major city across the country to secure billions for our schools, for affordable housing, and so much more. I'm a third-generation resident of the district, as my mom and grandmother came here as Holocaust survivors, and I'm raising my family here. Because of my strong record, I have been endorsed by the Teachers Union, the Central Labor Council, representing over 300 unions, DC 37, 32BJ, the Nurses Union, and so many other labor unions. Okay, I'll end on that note, and others. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Kim?
Thank you so much. Thank you, Ben and MNN, for hosting this debate. My name is Kim Moscuratolo. I am a journalist, an advocate, and an activist. I am a proud Cuban-American, and if elected, would be the first Latina to represent the fifth district in the City Council. For 20 years, I spent my career speaking truth to power, and for the last decade, I have been an advocate, standing up to powerful interests. I stood up to the gun lobby, as Legislative Committee Chair for New Yorkers Against Gun Violence, and I lobbied for victims in support of Nicholas's Law, which would protect children in homes with guns. In 2015, I was elected district leader in an insurgent campaign against a longtime incumbent, and I won that on a platform of ethics reform and transparency. And since becoming a district leader, I've worked hard to register voters, engage people in the political process, and I've even taken on my own party, fighting against paid lobbyists as party leaders. In 2019, I founded Yorkville By Local to protect our local mom and pops, because I saw the impact that empty storefronts were having on our neighborhoods. I have never worked for a city agency, I've never worked for an elected official, but I believe in this time, the experience that I have as somebody who has spoken truth to power, as an independent voice, is exactly what we need in the city government. I believe that we need those independent voices, and I would like to bring a journalist's eye to City Hall.
Thank you. Tricia?
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much, Ben. Thank you, MNN, for having this great conversation. My name is Tricia Shimomura. I'm a proud Japanese Puerto Rican, a working mom and a social worker, and I got my start working in this community as the Deputy Chief of Staff for Congresswoman Carolyn Maloney, where I worked to cut through red tape and deliver healthcare benefits to 9/11 first responders. I rallied behind our small businesses as we finished Phase One of the Second Avenue subway. I stood alongside our residents as we fought against the Marine Transfer Station, which is still, to this day, one of the most poorly planned garbage facilities in a highly dense residential neighborhood not 500 feet away from NYCHA residents. I am the first Vice Chair of Manhattan Community Board Eight. I've served on the board since 2015, very proudly. I'm also the co-chair of the Parks and Waterfront Committee, where I have worked on issues with our waterfront, fighting for our esplanade for over a decade. Over the summer, when the esplanade collapsed at 76th Street, I was the one who was first on site, roping off the area with parks employees, trying to make sure that nobody fell into the king-size bed hole. In 2019, I was pregnant, nine months pregnant, standing in the back of a crowded room, fighting against NYCHA infill, fighting against Fettner Properties, making sure that we never privatize NYCHA, that we never sell off, the city never sells off its biggest responsibilities to the highest luxury developer. I'm running for office because I love this community, and I want to make sure that the working families, seniors, and small businesses, and every resident living here have what they need to stay in our city and thrive. Thank you.
Chris?
Thanks, Ben, and thanks to MNN for putting this on. What you've heard so far is that we have a uniquely qualified field of candidates, and I'm proud to be a part of it. Something that stands out about my candidacy is I'm one of the only people here who's actually had experience working in a New York legislative body. As an aide in the New York State Senate, an informal policy advisor, LGBTQ advisor, I've worked on bills, including the New York State Dream Act, which my office lead sponsored. I worked on the early iterations of Halt Solitary. I've worked on the Fair and Towny Parole Bill, which is now passing out of committee and hopefully soon going to receive a floor vote. I believe that what I bring to this office would be a sense of how government works. How are laws passed? How are these relationships formed? And what do we need to do to get a bill through committee into the floor and pass? Prior to being a legislative aide and state senate aide, I worked as a journalist for many years. I worked as a policy analyst, including international and domestic. I managed folks who oversaw both Trump-era domestic policy and nuclear policy. And what I'm especially proud of is my work around sexual assault survivor advocacy. I was among the journalists who worked on the Bill Cosby case and did survivor interviewing. As we know, the work of journalists is what brought justice. And I will wrap it up there instead of going on past my time.
Appreciate it. Marco, over to you to round out our first round.
Thank you. Hello, I'm Marco Tamiyo. I have been a valuable member of the Community Board eight for 12 years, with a focus on integrity and honesty, defending the quality of life of our neighborhood. One of the issues that drove me to run for this position was to fight against the three fellow community members that they are running, because always they went against the community, and I have been fighting against them. Many, many fights I have been losing because they work together. And as an experienced architect, for 39 years of experience in the city and as a planner, I have a good vision of how to tackle the issues, especially be in part with a comprehensive land use plan. Through a viable and consistent zoning resolution, we can mitigate the disparities and have a more dynamic city with opportunities for all. I'm going to end it right there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so please be specific here in naming two pressing district issues and what specifically you plan to do about them as a City Council member to address them for your constituents, if you are so elected. Two pressing district issues and what specifically you would do to address each. Tricia, go ahead and get us started.
Yeah, so I'm going to start out again talking about something that's very near and dear to me, the East River Esplanade. This is not a pretty park space that we're fighting for. This is truly, for me, an issue of environmental justice and resiliency. The East River Esplanade is our first line of defense against rising sea storm waters. It is our first line of defense in protecting the FDR, in protecting our hospitals, in protecting NYCHA residents, in protecting our residents. So it really is so much more than just open space here. And for too long, the esplanade has been underfunded. It has been stuck in delays in terms of repairs. It has long suffered from lack of investment. And even the mayor's recent $284 million investment that they announced for the next fiscal, for the next budget, only covers the esplanade to 94th Street and above. It does not address the fact that we have a growing hole on 79th Street. It does not address the fact that we have just a patchwork job at 76th Street. It does not address the fact that we have another hole in 71st Street. So really, it comes back to holding our city agencies accountable for timely repairs. It comes back to funding. It comes back to collaborating with our elected officials to the north and to the south, also recognizing that this is not an east-side problem, that this is a city's responsibility to take care of our residents, take care of our infrastructure, and really make the long-term investments. I'll just say the other issue is, again, fighting against privatization of NYCHA and making sure that we take these responsibilities to our public housing residents responsibly.
Okay. Chris, two pressing district issues and specifically what you would do about them as a City Council member. Go ahead.
Sure. One of the issues that's been brought up the most to me recently is the New York Blood Center plant, which would create high-rise development in a residential area. It would require a mid-block rezoning that completely violates precedent that's been in place since the 1980s. And while the New York Blood Center does good work, a lot of the space would simply be leased to commercial interests, and the community doesn't want to go through 50 months of construction, the complete blocking of sunlight from a public park, from a school, and the impact that it's going to have on local affordable housing and quality of life. So I was among the candidates who spoke out against this plan from the beginning, and I will continue to fight immediately on that issue, even as a candidate, because this is something that's, you know, a fast-moving target. In addition to that, affordable housing. After COVID, a lot of the folks in my building fled. They just left. And people weren't coming in to replace them because our rents were so high. It was ridiculous. The landlord ended up having to drop the prices by almost 50% for a lot of the units to get people to come back. But the reality is that's what those units should have cost in the first place. And until we start engaging in better rent control, building more affordable units, incentivizing people to actually live in their homes, imposing vacancy taxes, we're going to keep having this dearth of affordable housing on the Upper East Side, and I want to fix it.
Thank you. Quickly, Chris, when you say the community is against the Blood Center project, how do you know that?
Because they've shown up to community board meetings and made their voices known. It's about an 80/20 split, and sometimes higher. Occasionally, it's unanimous against, but the lowest, the most conservative estimate is 80/20 based on community response.
Thank you. Marco, two pressing district issues and what you'd do about them. Go ahead.
Okay. The first issue is overdevelopment. If we minimize the discretionary actions, that means eular embarrasses, we can protect the character of our neighborhood. We can reduce the exacerbation of the stifling traffic conditions, crowding mass transportation, and reduction of affordable housing. As a right of development project, we can create an opportunity to grow the city and change, and we can still have a vibrant neighborhood, capping the heights of the buildings. We can decrease the loss of sunlight. We can decrease the loss of air quality, avoid circumventing disruptions, control the load density, because right now, the luxury affordable housing has been taking possession on the Upper East Side, building exclusively luxury housing, or trying to neglect the market rate and the affordable housing. In disadvantaged neighborhoods, we can recommend to intensify great opportunities to create jobs, free rights, tax incentives, improving infrastructure. All neighborhoods can have the same opportunity with an equitable city with opportunities for all. Now, about the open spaces, the problem of the open spaces is the esplanade. They have no idea what are they doing. Most of the people, they are concentrated in a flower, when in reality, it's a structural problem that has to resolve, the problems of the protection of the esplanade, the FDR, and the citizens. Thank you.
Billy, over to you.
So there's a lot of pressing issues in our district, but the two that I'll pick are housing affordability and small business vacancies. So on housing in our district, one in five residents are severely rent burdened, meaning they're paying more than 50% of their income to rent. Among low-income residents, 62%, 62% are severely rent burdened. And we are not building real meaningful levels of affordable housing. The affordability that we do get comes in drips and drabs. We just had a building open up about 11 units out of 200 total units on 94th Street that are quote-unquote "affordable." So we need to dramatically change our land use and zoning process to build real affordability. But beyond that, I think we have to break away from this current game we play, where we rely on private developers to give us a little bit of generosity with affordable housing as a city. And this will redound to our benefit on the Upper East Side and Roswell Island and East Harlem, but as a city, we need social housing, we need universal right to counsel to protect people who are facing eviction. I mean, so many more programs, they're actually going to bring real affordability and tenant protections in our neighborhood. Just in the interest of time, I'll jump to small business vacancies. Even before COVID, we were home to one of the zip codes, the zip code with the second-most retail vacancies in New York City. So what do we need to do? Because anyone with two eyes can see, you know, what we're facing on every avenue, vacancies almost every block, multiple vacancies. So we need the Small Business Shop Survival Act. We also need to work with Albany to impose a vacancy tax on landlords, who we see all the time, are raising the rent, kicking out their tenant, and the storefront is vacant for months, if not years. And then finally, we need a program of direct rental supports for legacy small businesses, mom and pops, that have been in the neighborhood for five or 10 years. These businesses not just give our neighborhood a character, they provide the eyes on the street that Jane Jacobs wrote about. They make our neighborhoods charming and important to us, and we need to preserve it.
Thank you. Rebecca?
It's difficult to choose just two issues, but I'll start with housing. That's affordable housing, that's protecting public housing, and that's also strengthening the rental and tenant protections right now to combat harassment, combat evictions, and enact widespread rent control, so no family's paying more than 30% of their monthly income on rent. We need to build more affordable housing here. Recent data shows that over the last decade, the Upper East Side has added only 278 units of housing, and that's not even all affordable housing. And when it is, you have to ask, "Affordable for who?" So we need to do a lot of work on that front, and I'm ready to do that work. Public housing, I'm proud to serve on the Housing Committee on the Community Board. I've long fought infill. I've authored resolutions against the infill project here in our neighborhood that would have taken a park from children at public housing. I've also submitted testimony against RAD, against the Blueprint for Change. An attack on public housing is an attack on all housing, and we need to protect and preserve it. It's also about going up to Albany, as I said, to enact an eviction moratorium, to expand rent control, to strengthen tenant protections. And here at the city level, it's also about increasing the right to counsel to cover more tenants. The other issue I'll touch on is accessibility. And I'm not just talking about transportation here, I'm talking about every aspect of our community. That's small businesses, empowering them with grants to update so all of our neighbors can have access to them. That's the Lexington Avenue subway line, where it's largely inaccessible. And for example, I couldn't take the subway for a year after my accident because it's so inaccessible and we didn't have the Q train yet. That's public accommodations like parks, libraries, schools, that are also still inaccessible. Accessibility affects everyone, and it helps everyone, from seniors to parents with strollers to disabled New Yorkers, and we need to advance a really robust conversation about that here to make sure we're bringing about the change we need.
Quickly, Rebecca, when you say you'd fight for accessibility, is that legislatively, is that a budget item? What's the number one thing that needs to happen on accessibility to make it more robust?
Honestly, it's all of the above. We need to fund updates, including, like I said, direct monies to businesses so they can do these updates. We need to fund the MTA more robustly. Their fast-forward plan gets at the heart of it, but we need to be sure accessibility updates are at the front. It's about advancing public dollars to update our parks, update our libraries, update our schools, and make sure that we have widespread accessibility. It's also about passing legislation in a number of other areas that it would take a long time to speak to now.
Over to Julie for two pressing district issues and needs and what you specifically would do as a City Council member.
Sure. Well, some of the biggest problems our district faces, whether it's a lack of affordability, overcrowded schools, a lack of open space, transportation issues, can really all be addressed if we finally, once and for all, reform our land use process. Right now, we have an antiquated process. There's a different negotiation every single time with no clear standards. We're one of the few cities, major cities across the country, that actually doesn't have comprehensive planning, that doesn't do a master plan. It makes no sense. And so if I was in the council, I would absolutely work on introducing legislation to once and for all have comprehensive planning so we can address these issues. Second issue I would address would be small businesses. We have approximately 240,000 small businesses across New York City. One-third of them will close because of COVID, it's estimated. We need to do much more. As Commissioner of Consumer Affairs, I lowered fines on small businesses, allowed them to cure a fine before going right to a violation. We need to do that across all agencies. We also should create a unified, one-stop digital portal for all licenses, all permits, all inspections, all applications, so we need to do that as well. We need to eradicate the commercial rent tax, which is severely penalizing the small businesses, particularly in our community. And I also think there's a lot more the city can do. We could, through small business services, provide back-office support to small businesses. We could initiate bulk buying programs for small businesses. We could provide free tech consultation services as well. Thank you.
You mentioned, Julie, comprehensive planning and that you'd introduce legislation. There has been comprehensive planning legislation introduced. Do you not support that? You want a different version? Or what's your take on that legislation that's in the City Council now?
Parts of Speaker Johnson's bill do absolutely move the ball forward in terms of comprehensive planning, but I'd like the bill to go further. I do have a concern, having chaired a community board for seven years, that I don't want community boards disenfranchised at all from decision-making. And so I'd like to see more input from community boards in that specific piece of legislation. And I'd also like it to address education issues, school seats, affordable housing, and be more specific in that bill.
Okay, thank you. And Kim, to round out our second round here, two pressing district issues and needs and what you'd specifically do about them.
Yeah, absolutely. So I will, excuse me, echo what both Billy and Julie have pointed out, which is that I think our failing small businesses are a major crisis for our district and for the entire city. As I mentioned earlier, in 2019, I founded an advocacy group called Yorkville By Local because I saw all of these empty storefronts in our neighborhoods, and there didn't seem to be any groups that were specifically focused on that issue. To address this, I think first of all, we need to address the immediate needs of small businesses in the wake of COVID-19, so that means focusing on direct relief. I think the city needs to take federal money that has been given and offer grants, especially to micro businesses. Other cities, San Francisco, Phoenix, have had great success with grants ranging from $5,000 to $20,000, depending on the size of the business and the number of employees. I also think we need to crack down on tech giants, you know, companies like Seamless and DoorDash that have enormous fees and oftentimes take advantage and exploit small businesses and delivery workers. We have a temporary cap on fees. I would like to see that cap made permanent. And then another issue that hasn't really been brought up, I think homelessness is another crisis for the city, but particularly here in our district as well. We see it. It has exploded, certainly in the last year. I think there are a few concrete steps. First of all, I think that we need to remove barriers to people getting help. Human.NYC put out a great report. There are so many barriers for folks on the street getting direct services. They need to be contacted multiple times by outreach workers before they can be offered services. Those services need to be offered immediately. We need to raise the value of housing vouchers, which do not meet market needs right now. And we also need to crack down on source-of-income discrimination to truly help our homeless neighbors.
Thank you. All right. A lot of interesting things mentioned there, some of them we will come back to. For our third round of questions here, we're going to start with Marco and then go from there. Please speak directly to your plans to help the folks that live and work on Roosevelt Island. What are your Roosevelt Island plans? How can you make sure that Roosevelt Island is better served as a City Council member? What are some specific things you would fight for to help the residents, commuters, business owners and so forth on Roosevelt Island? Go ahead, Marco.
Well, one of the main issues is Roosevelt Island has been neglected because it's a special district that is regulated by the state and the city. So nobody is almost as responsible for that section of our district. And therefore, some lenders, they leave Roosevelt Island and we are fighting to get back, back in that community. In addition, recently they presented a plan for a bike in that area. I think it's the most reasonable location for the bikes. It makes a lot of sense. They use very well the space. In addition to that, I strongly support the creation of Cornell Tech, which basically brings a lot of jobs, a lot of benefits for that section. And this section has been thriving since then because Cornell has been being part of the community. And now I'm planning to work with Cornell because it has been presented different issues that the community needs. And in addition to that, there is a need of food in that section. And we have another problem is the, 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 the community is fighting to preserve the sauna, sauna hospitals that is in shambles. But as a tourist attraction, we try to bring back to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Billy, over to you. Roosevelt Island, what's your plan?
I love this question because we don't talk about Roosevelt Island enough. So let's start with the problem. Look at the last year. Roosevelt Island did not have an early voting site. Roosevelt Islanders had to wait far too long to get a vaccination site. Roosevelt Islanders had to wait for far too long for learning bridges to come to the island. There's a lot of problems, but what's the main source? Roosevelt Island is governed by RIAAC at the state level and yet are electing representatives who have very little power over RIAAC. So what has to change? First, I'll use my position as a city council member to push for changes at state level to make sure Roosevelt Island residents are being elected to the Roosevelt Island Operating Corporation. But short of that, we need to be pressing RIAAC to be transparent and open with residents all the time. Far too often, meetings are canceled, residents find themselves unable to ask questions of RIAAC. So what would I do? I believe to date, at least in this race, I'm the only candidate who has proposed doing town halls on Roosevelt Island every, if not every month, then every two months. And why? Because I think I can use the power of the council member, the power to convene, to bring together the stakeholders at the state level, the stakeholders at the city level, the stakeholders who provide services. A lot of people don't realize so many services to Roosevelt Island actually come from Queens. So I will be convening those stakeholders to get people's questions answered. And then bigger picture, what do we have to do? We have to support our small businesses on Roosevelt Island's Main Street. We need to be building real levels of affordable housing on Roosevelt Island. Because you know, currently the housing that has been built and Roosevelt Island at this point is actually mostly built out, has not been affordable for most people. And we do need to improve the bike and transportation infrastructure. We need a select bus and we need improved subway infrastructure and signal improvements on the F-line.
Thank you. Rebecca.
I agree with Billy. We have to start with RIAAC. As I said, I have experience going up to Albany to pass laws that have long languished. So I'm ready to go up there and make sure that we pass legislation to have real community Roosevelt Island residents on the RIAAC board and have their input be binding, not simply advisory as residents, which is something we too often see at the community board. Outside of that, I think about housing, I think about small businesses, I think about Kohler Hospital and the healthcare needs. COVID really laid bare the issues at Kohler that have long been going on when they tried to shut the hospital down in the past. Issues with vaccines, issues with testing. So we need to increase funding for our public hospital system and target money specifically at Roosevelt Island for their healthcare needs. When it comes to housing, a lot of the affordable housing on Roosevelt Island is aging out of its affordability, harming our neighbors on Roosevelt Island. Again, I'm ready to go to Albany and pass a law that's going to ensure that Mitchellama Housing Rent Controlled Rent Stabilized Units maintain their affordability in perpetuity. It's a conversation I know Albany is ready to have on this front. When it comes to small businesses, we need to have SBF specifically targeting Roosevelt Island, offering direct monies, offering grants, offering small business support on the island, bringing the resources directly to them. And as council member, I'm committing right now to have weekly office hours to be sure Roosevelt Island residents have full access to all of their needs, have their issues addressed and always have an open door for me. So every week I'll be on Roosevelt Island, speaking with our neighbors as council member, working with them and also shepherding issues up to our representatives in the Assembly and Senate that have many more bites at that apple for change.
Thank you. Julie, Roosevelt Island.
Well, Roosevelt Island is such a wonderful place, but there are so many problems facing the community that have to be addressed. It's quickly losing its stock of affordable housing, as was mentioned earlier. Far too many storefronts along its Main Street are vacant and the entire island is vulnerable to rising sea levels and storms. And these issues are all exacerbated by governance structure controlled by RIAAC, as was mentioned before. I've faced a similar problem before in the seven years that I chaired Community Board One with the Battery Park City Authority, a state entity. And we prevailed there through tough advocacy, holding the authorities' feet to the fire. We got unprecedented investments in Battery Park City Parks and Waterfronts and the Esplanade. And we also got residents on the board who had true authority. I want to serve on the Oversight and Investigations Committee on the City Council. And while legally that city committee cannot have jurisdiction over RIAAC, we can absolutely call a hearing where we hear from residents and call attention to the matters and really put a lot of pressure on Albany. I also propose implementing measures to keep Roosevelt Island affordable, increasing rental assistance. We need to push for vacancy tax to encourage landlords to fill vacant storefronts. And I want to utilize storefronts for new purposes such as civic exhibitions, artist studios, co-working spaces. And we have to get a credit union or bank branch there. We also need to, okay, I was going to address environment.
Last thing, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, we need to do what we also did in Lower Manhattan. We have to construct larger marshes to act as actual buffers for storm surges that will affect both Roosevelt Island and the rest of the city.
Thank you. Kim.
Thank you so much. And Roosevelt Island is a very special place. In 2014, I was one of the founders of the Four Freedoms Democratic Club and we made a point of saying that we needed to hold meetings on Roosevelt Island. Specifically because even though it is part of the 76th Assembly District, it had too often been ignored by political leaders and local political clubs. And so that is something that is very important to me. One of the things I've been really shocked by, not only is the lack of representation by Roosevelt Island residents and their chosen picks on the RIAAC board, but the fact that even though Roosevelt Islanders are New York City residents and pay New York City taxes, they are completely unrepresented in the New York City budget, save for a few participatory budgeting projects. That really shocked me. All of their funding comes from RIAAC, which in turn gets its money from ground leases on Roosevelt Island. And so what I would like to be able to do as a city council member and something that we, I think, do actually have power over is advocating for Roosevelt Island in the city budget, making sure that we are putting funding towards projects on Roosevelt Island so that residents there are truly represented. Beyond that, we need to address transportation issues. I was on Roosevelt Island two years ago during their Cherry Blossom Festival, which became a huge tourist attraction. But unfortunately, so many people came to the island and there were so few ways to get off of the island that people became stuck there. There were crowds of people on the subway, people waiting for hours for the tram or the ferry. That is unacceptable and it is unsafe. And so we need to talk about transportation for folks both getting to the island and getting off the island so that people can enjoy it, but do so safely.
Quickly, Kim, though, what's a transportation solution that you would fight for?
So it's a great question. There has been talk of the creation of some sort of a pedestrian bridge, for example, from Manhattan to Roosevelt Island, which currently doesn't exist. It is controversial, not everybody supports it, but I know from being on that island two years ago that if folks had had the option to walk from Roosevelt Island to Manhattan instead of waiting for hours on a crowded subway platform, they absolutely would have taken that opportunity.
Okay. Tricia.
Yeah, I think that one, I echo everything that has been said already about lack of stronger representation and a direct representation between Roosevelt Islanders and RIAAC. And what I would just say though is that I think that Roosevelt Island needs representatives that truly know Roosevelt Island best and know that community there. I'm already doing the work on Roosevelt Island. I'm there every week, working at the food pantry there. I want to just say that one thing is that a large portion of Roosevelt Islanders are seniors and a large portion of them are immigrants. A large portion of them are people living with disabilities. These are all extremely vulnerable populations that we just have failed to truly meet their needs. Roosevelt Island had long suffered from lack of vaccine access. I was part of the advocates who are fighting Albany to get vaccines there. We are still not doing enough. We still have incredible food needs. Let me just tell you, every week, the lines are longer. We need more language access on the island. We need more culturally sensitive services. So when Julie and when Kim and Billy are talking about, talking about housing and talking about other social service needs, we need those, but we need them to be culturally sensitive. We need them to, we need to look at Roosevelt Island through an intersectional lens here, not just, not just because they're islanders, but because they are, they are also kind of getting impacted in several different ways. So I echo all of those things. Just one other piece on transportation. I was one of the longtime advocates fighting for direct ferry service from 90th Street to Roosevelt Island. We got it kind of through Astoria, but I still think that we should have direct ferry service. It is performing a ride and could better connect our community.
And Chris, it's hard to go last year, but go ahead.
That's okay. I mean, I'm going to sound like a broken record, but it's not a bad thing. My opponents have great ideas. To start, I'm going to say, Tricia, you stole part of my answer. I was about to bring up, I think seniors and intersectionality are hugely important. I'm on Roosevelt Island all the time. I've had dear friends who live there. And something that I frequently see is seniors are often not able to access basic services without leaving the island in a consistent way. So we've had times where there wasn't banking available on the island. Or as was mentioned before, transportation off the island was either unreliable or took too long. When you're already having to go off the island to make it to something like a doctor's appointment and you can't rely on transportation and your, you know, mobility may not be at the same place as mine is, you're at a, you know, you're at a major disadvantage. So in addition to bike infrastructure, quality of living, affordable housing, we need to ensure that the people that already live there are able to, to have their needs met in their place of residence, which is on the island. I also love what Kim said about a pedestrian bridge. I know it's controversial, but as somebody who lives on 86th Street, I look across the way and go, this would be so much easier if we could simply exit. And it is a safety problem. If there were any kind of emergency on the island and people needed to rapidly leave, they cannot do it. And that's something that's, it's just not acceptable. We don't, we wouldn't accept that in other places. And this all comes back to what Billy was saying earlier about RIAAC. Unfortunately, at the city level, if we're being honest, we don't have a lot of say at all about what's going on with RIAAC because of the way that it's designed and is on the board and how it's appointed. We need to be advocating in Albany for changes because until we fix that fundamental issue, we're going to keep seeing a lack of representation and all the issues we're talking about are going to keep, you know, population will keep being underserved.
Thank you. All right, some really interesting discussion there that I hope Roosevelt Islanders will pay attention to. One or two folks, I think Chris and maybe others, mentioned this blood center expansion proposal and project that's in the offing. But I want to talk about that and then also larger issues of development in the district, both commercial and housing. So if you could each start with your stance on the blood center expansion project and then go into your larger vision stance on both commercial and housing development. And, and please try to be specific in terms of things like, do you agree with proposals that are out there around restricting, you know, making new height restriction limits for buildings in the district? Do you think there's parts of the district that could welcome new development of housing or affordable housing or commercial development? And things of that nature. And I'll probably add some follow-ups in this round. So we're going to start with Rebecca. If you could start with your stance on the blood center expansion project and then talk a little bit about your larger vision for commercial and housing development in the district. Go ahead.
I'm proud to be on record opposing the blood center rezoning. Community board meetings are packed to the gills with community members just screaming in opposition. And we need to hear their voices and we need to honor their feelings. The impacts it will have is a mid-block rezoning on St. Catherine's Park, on the nearby school. We need to be sure that we're fighting this blood center rezoning and working with our neighbors to do so. And I'm proud to already be doing that on the community board. And then when it comes to development, we need to take back the reins of power. We need to shift the paradigm here from developers to community members. And right away, when I think of where we can put affordable housing, there are two lots, empty lots I walk by all the time. I'm sure all of us do. One is at 85th and 1st Avenue. That could support affordable housing. I want to see that empty lot built into 100% affordable housing in perpetuity for seniors, for working families, for people in our community. There's another one at 79th and 1st, right by Ajata Valentina, where the community has said, why is this lot empty? What are we doing here? We hear there's a developer that has control over it, but what are they waiting for? Let's put affordable housing there. And then when it comes to large scale development, I support a 210-foot height cap. To me, it's unconscionable that the west side of the Upper East Side has a 210-foot height cap. But here on our easternmost avenues, we don't. And after the 2nd Avenue subway opened, it's become a developer's playground where they're tearing down small walk-ups. Like I'm zooming in from right now in my studio apartment where we're losing rent-controlled and stabilized units. We're losing affordable housing. It's not being replaced by the luxury market rate unaffordable development we're seeing. So I want to implement a community-wide plan that enforces strong affordability, ensures that all new development, be it mixed use, purely residential, has at least 50% affordable housing. And one final anecdote for the mixed use, we need to be sure it's not just space for big box stores, but smaller spaces that small businesses in our community can go to or those that want to.
And Rebecca, I don't know that I heard in the beginning what your specific objection to the blood center project is. What is the number one reason to oppose it in your mind?
As I said, it's the impact on a mid-block rezoning. It is literally in the middle of 67th Street and we don't have precedent for that. And it will, it'll set a really poor precedent where we're now going to have a 300-plus foot building going up. That's not affordable housing. It's not purely the blood center. It's mostly commercial space where the blood center is just doing a land grab and a money grab, excuse me. So that's my main issue with it. We need to be sure we're not setting a bad precedent here in our community or for anyone else in the city.
Thank you. Julie, over to you. The blood center project and larger vision on commercial and housing development in the district.
Absolutely. So I'm completely opposed to the blood center project because it is a mid-block rezoning. And to be very specific about what my objection is to that, in the seven years that I chaired Community Board One, you know, we saw when developers come in with a mid-block rezoning, the issue is that it's really non-contextual. It violates almost every tentative zoning law to allow a mid-block rezoning. You always should put them more on the avenues. This is literally in the middle of the block. It would obviously set a very dangerous precedent for zoning, not only for this community, but citywide. So I am absolutely opposed. I do support a 210 height limit. I think it's important to keep the community contextual. So I think that is very important as well. And the other thing that I would say in terms of commercial development issues is big box retailers. One of the things that we successfully did at Community Board One after 9/11 is we were able through rezoning to limit the square footage of big box retailers on smaller streets. And also to limit whether it's bank branches or ATMs that are really taking over the character of the neighborhood. Through zoning, you can address those issues because we want to make sure that we're always supporting the mom and pop small businesses that have been in the community for years, legacy small businesses. We can do what the city of San Francisco did and have legacy small business legislation. So there are many ways that we can address these various zoning issues. And lastly, I would say a lot of this can of course be addressed through comprehensive ULR planning, as I mentioned before.
Just quickly, Julie, is it, is a 210-foot limit, are you concerned at all about how that might hurt the possibility of adding new housing and new affordable housing to the district long-term?
Absolutely. That's the big tension. The tension between 210 and affordable housing is how do you build affordable housing if you have a rigid 210 limit? So yes, I do support 210 and I think, but I do think at the same time, we need to look at other sites to see how we can build affordable housing. Because obviously we have an affordable housing crisis, not only in this community, but citywide. So we need to think outside of the box. I do think it's possible to meet both objectives. I don't think they're mutually exclusive and I think we can do that.
Kim, over to you.
Yeah, thanks so much. So look, we have an affordable housing crisis and a housing crisis period in the city. There's no question about it. More broadly, I have come out in support of things like legalizing accessory dwelling units, legalizing basement apartments, doing away with single-family zoning in certain parts of the city, here in the district in particular. I actually have not come out specifically against a 210 height cap. I generally am opposed to arbitrary height caps in general because I think that when we talk about land nuisance zoning, we talk about affordable housing, we want to be able to have the freedom to build more affordable housing. And so if that means a building that's 300 feet tall, but we get, you know, a certain number of affordable units, I think that's worth talking about. And I think that we really limit ourselves when we talk about straight across the board height caps without really talking about density. I'd be much more in support of zoning for certain types of density, you know, two-bedroom, three-bedroom apartments instead of huge lofts with 20-foot ceilings, I think is a much better way to get the kind of affordable housing we need. I have come out against the blood center. I was intrigued when I first heard about the proposal. I think Bill de Blasio leaked it somewhere and I thought maybe it was more housing. I was a little disappointed to find out that it was primarily a real estate deal in terms of, you know, the blood center essentially renting out a huge amount of space when it really only needed something like five floors to really do the work that it was doing. And I've been disappointed with the transparency there. In terms of where we could put housing in the district, there are a few parts of the district that are actually zoned automotive. I found out recently on 90th Street, they're currently, for example, tearing down an Avis garage. And I was curious if they were going to put housing there. Apparently they're in the process of putting up self-storage. I think that's a terrible use of the space. I think that we could rezone for residential and potentially build housing in some of those areas.
Thank you. Tricia.
Yeah, so I have come out strongly against the blood center project for all of the same reasons, very much similar to Rebecca. But I'll just add a couple, a couple more to this. It does set a bad precedent. It is take an R8 zoning to a C47, I believe, which is completely obliterates the reason for midterm. completely obliterates the reason for mid-block zoning, by the way, and would set a terrible precedent. It also, you know, it also would deeply impact St. Catherine's Park across the street, deeply impact the Julia Richmond Educational Complex, which serves, serves students of all different levels of ability. It's very dangerous of what it's and what it's doing. I'm also just gonna say, I have a problem with, with the way that this development came about. They did not engage their neighbors. They did not engage JRECK. They did not truly and openly engage in the community surrounding them. And I don't believe that we should be supporting or rewarding developers for bad behavior, period. I do support a 210 height cap, because I, I think that generally, big real estate would have you believe that the only way that you build affordable is when you give into high-density, high-luxury, high, high, tall towers. And I reject that notion. I do. I, it is, I do believe that it is entirely possible to build 100% affordable. And frankly, I don't believe that our district needs one more unit of affordable, excuse me, of luxury real estate. I, I think that we are in an affordable housing crisis, not a luxury housing crisis. And so for me, it comes back to, where are we? Let's take away these big benefits that we're giving to these luxury developers and let's instead focus all of our efforts and all of our energy into preserving the affordable housing that we have and building 100% new affordable units at every income level in every district.
Anywhere, anywhere in the district you'd name that you think could be home to a good amount of new housing?
100%. I mean, Rebecca mentioned it before, but every single lot that we have open right now should be focused on affordable. So definitely 79th and First, which is an extell property. A gentleman and a developer who told me that he didn't think that all New Yorkers enjoy trees and air and light. That is what he said to me. Yeah, let's build that affordable. Definitely at 78th and First, there's a lot there that I just learned sold for $90 million. Let's build affordable there. Definitely on 86th Street as well. Let's do it.
Over to you, Chris.
Sure. I, of course, already answered the blood center question before you got around to asking it. So I do oppose it. And for all of the reasons that we've just heard, I believe Julie went through the reasons around why these types of mid-block zonings are, are so, well, frankly, it's not even just creating a new precedent, it's violating a current precedent. And in addition to that, we have the community input issue, the environmental impact, the constant construction and the fact that the community has rejected it. We have to listen to the people we're running to represent the people. If they tell us that they do not want this that strongly, that unanimously, we should be listening. In addition to that, I love what Rebecca just said about the lot at 85th and First, because I live on 86th between First and Second. So I am looking out my window at an empty lot right now where we could be building affordable housing. I completely understand Kim's concern about height caps, but I would push back just a little bit on the phrasing of the arbitrariness for some of the reasons that Tricia and Julie mentioned. When you're not imposing some sort of height cap, you end up giving developers an incentive, incidentally, that could actually prevent the development of more affordable housing, because what you get are just luxury high-rises. So I like the answers around density. I think we need to make sure that we're building more affordable units, not these giant luxury condos. We need to ensure that what we're building is designated affordable. And as Julie said, I don't believe that it's impossible to meet our housing needs without building giant high-rises. I think we can do it. I have, I have faith in us.
You know, there seems to be a tendency among you and, and your colleagues here around sort of, you know, that, that listening to some of the sort of community voices against development and, and sort of opposing, you know, the blood center is one example, but also in the discussion of the heights of, of housing. How do you make sure as a council member that you hear, hear from folks who, you know, would, would approve of a project? But, you know, those, those folks are often not the ones who want to come to oppose something, because there's much more of a motivation to come and say no.
That is a fantastic question. We should be making better use of technology resources. Having votes tied to email addresses, login portals. As a city government, we don't do a great job of integrating technology. We need to make it easy for residents to provide feedback immediately from their homes on major decisions. Ben Kalos has tested that out just a little bit with some of, with a bit of online polling responses through some of his type. But I think we can expand on that quite a bit and ensure we're getting more voices then. Because like you said, there is that incentive when you're angry about something to show up and when you're not, you know.
Marco, over to you on the blood center and your larger vision on commercial and housing development in the district. Go ahead.
The, the question is very complex and I think is a little bit unfair to ask. Very big questions, because it requires each of them one minute and a half. But I'm gonna try to quickly hurry up. I oppose this proposal. It would destroy the residential character of our neighborhood and make it commercial industrial. If a place and their whole is changing, they're already over-burned services and aging infrastructure in our community. This project devastate our neighborhood. It will destroy the good concept of Rio. The higher 334 feet will cast perpetual shadows on the entire neighborhood, including the park. Additionally, this project will bring 5,500 more people to the area daily and will worsen the already traffic conditions of the overcrowding mass transit. That's resolved in great luck, lead to the congestion pricing, triggered the inflation, raising the cost of living, provoking the migration of low-income households of our community. Finally, this new lab does not meet the developer profit expectation. He will be able to convert the labs commercial use in shelter, prison, catering. And, and there is many more about this issue. Now, talking about affordable housing and developing affordable housing, let me give the general idea. Generating more contextual district, we can have a sustainable city, capping the building heights. We can minimize the negative impact of upscale building. Therefore, we can reduce the loss of sunlight, poor quality of air. And we can control the development, circumvent the many revelations, and we produce affordable housing. And the problem of affordable housing, most of the people, they say, oh, let's go build a, where are you gonna get the money? They don't even know how much it costs one to build one affordable housing. One affordable housing is between $800 to $1 million. And now the subsidies, the subsidies. Thank you. I will continue with that. Thank you.
Billy, over to you.
So look, I invite folks to go to my website, billyfreeland.com/policies, because I actually get into detail on my opposition to the blood center rezoning. And then I talk about zoning more generally. But here's why I'm opposed to the blood center rezoning. Simply put, it's zoning for dollars. I think it's actually a form of corporate welfare. Essentially, right now, the blood center, which stands at 67 feet tall, is trying to go from an R8B zoning to a C27. That would let them go up to 334 feet. And why is this a problem? Because what they want to do for their own operations, they can currently do within the zoning envelope. But they propose going up to 334 feet so that they can then lease out to other commercial tenants. And that's how they're going to fund their expansion. So we're essentially printing money out of thin air. I think that's a principle that we shouldn't permit. We should not accept that as a city. It's not just about the Upper East Side. It's a citywide issue, zoning for dollars. But jumping to the parts of the district where I think we can build, it's already, you know, the words are taken out of, out. 85th and First, 79th and First, which is extell, it's been vacant for two years. We should be building real affordable housing. I support a land value tax that would actually put the pressure on developers and say, look, you want to keep this property vacant and hurt our community for years and years while you mull, whether you're gonna tear down one more tenement building? We're gonna tax you and we're gonna fund social housing while we're at it. A couple more quick points, Ben. I mean, I think, again, uniquely in this race, I've been saying we need to replace the 1961 zoning resolution, rewrite the resolution by, with communities at the table, not having a resolution that developers and their lobbyists have mastered. And then here specifically in District Five, we have something, R10 inclusionary zoning. It lets you get a 20% density bonus, floor area bonus, but what do we get in exchange? Only 4% or 5% affordable housing units. I don't like that trade. So I want to bring mandatory inclusionary housing to the district, requiring developers to put in actual levels of affordability. We've got a lot of zoning changes, Ben, that we have to do to make sure that neighborhoods like ours are building real affordable housing. But what we're currently doing with super-tall luxury buildings is not working for anybody.
Thank you. So now we're in our last round of a broad question, then we'll do some quick lightning round and, and closing statements. There's a lot of issues that sort of get lumped into this term quality of life issues. All sorts of things from trash to even crime, bike lanes. There's a lot of different things that sort of generally are discussed around, you know, what it's, what the, what the world around you looks like in your neighborhood and, you know, some of the issues that impact how you get around and what things look like and your daily experiences. But I want to start with this. Often, people will lump homelessness into the discussion of quality of life, especially when talking about people who are living on the streets or in the subway. So I'd like everybody to start their answer, answering this specific question and then zooming out a bit. If you are, if your district office, as a city council member, and this happens quite often, is called where a constituent, someone in the district, is asking you to address an issue where there are people living on the street, what do you do about that? What do you do when someone calls your district office to say they want to report an issue, they want something done about this? How do you handle that call? And then after that, if you can zoom out to other thoughts around what you consider sort of district quality of life issues and, and things on your agenda on that larger bucket. Chris, go ahead.
That's a really thoughtful question, and you're actually the very first person to frame it that way to us. I find that the term quality of life can be used in two ways. One, it can be used in a genuine sense to mean quality of life, but oftentimes, it's a right-wing calling card to stigmatize people who are experiencing homelessness. And frankly, people are engaging in racism. And something that matters a lot to me is ensuring that we break the cycle of homelessness, because oftentimes, our goals around homelessness are simply moving people experiencing it out of sight. And, and it's wrong. It's a human rights issue. I've supported the construction of another safe haven shelter in my district, but we need to go a whole lot further than that, because as long as we're creating these temporary solutions and having people go in and out and in and out of shelters, A, we're not giving them a permit at home, which is just morally wrong. In addition to that, we're creating this cycle of homelessness. So if a constituent called my office to complain that homelessness exists, I would tell them homelessness is a policy choice. And I am doing my very best to get people into homes. Because my concerns for those people, the inconvenience of having to interact with people experiencing homelessness pales in comparison to the experience of being homeless. And my, my former legislative director was personally experienced homelessness. So this, you know, this matters a lot to me, both on an ideological level and it's something that I understand personally. And I believe that compassion is the word that we need to keep in our minds when talking about people who are struggling. In addition to that, expanding on quality of life, I believe we need to expand what that means to include everybody. Quality of life cannot be a right-wing calling card. When we talk about quality of life, we need to be talking about our children of color who are going to school being treated the same way as white children. Are our neighborhoods properly integrated? Are we experiencing, are people able to afford their homes? And then, of course, there's, you know, I'm gonna leave sanitation for Tricia to talk about, because she is the expert on sanitation around here. So. Now, and Billy, and Billy.
Thank you.
But I think, yeah, so that's, yeah, it's about compassion. It's about compassion.
Marco, over to you. What would you do about that call and how do you sort of connect that to larger, you know, livability and the general concept of what quality of life means in a, in a district?
Well, the first issue without doubt is the land use issue. Because that part, it would tackle the disparity and the distribution of money. The city right now is spending $2 billion or $3 billion to house affordable housing. And that part, to house in that direction, we still have the problems outside. And that's the complaint that you are saying. When in reality, we create areas for affordable housing, we can obtain a less cost, probably 50% less the city can spend. So the issue right now is to work with the not-for-profit organizations and the people that produce supporting housing. And once we have this group of people together, we can still produce an affordable housing and we can refer it to them. About the quality of the street in our community, we have many closed streets and completed disrepair. That's usually the common call that the, the community receives. And why? Because the seniors are impossible to navigate to close the streets. And therefore, we need to repair there right away. For those people with, especially the senior, to just move one inch or, or half an inch higher is a struggle. And that's what I'm seeing frequently in the corners of the street for the seniors, with the walkers that they, they usually frequently have. Many narrow streets creating a sensation of darkness. That we need to go to enforce the building code that, that obligate the landlord to put exterior lights. So our lights, our narrow street can become more illuminated.
Thank you.
Have them for the bike line. That is a very nightmare. And I think I'm gonna end it right there. Thank you.
Okay. Well, that was an interesting, interesting point to end it on, and I think people will be, will be interested in. Billy, over to you. What would you, what would you do about that specific call and how do you connect it to larger issues? Go ahead.
The first thing I do if I got that call is I'd figure out, how can I help? I ask myself, what can my office do to reach out to that person who's experiencing homelessness? The reality is, most people who are on our streets, sleeping on our streets, they've tried to go to a shelter. They either found it unsafe, maybe they had things stolen from them. There's a trust problem between people experiencing homelessness in our city and our shelter system. And so we need to lead with empathy. We need to recognize that this is not a choice people want to make. This is a choice people are being forced to make because their policy leaders have failed them. This is a situation that I do not believe police ought to be involved in responding to. I would take police out of homeless outreach. But I do think I'd work with nonprofits and other organizations to reach out and see how we can get some of the services they need. You know, it goes back to something Tim said earlier. We have to really cut down the bureaucracy in terms of homeless outreach. The fact that you have to see someone at least, I think, three times on the street before you can identify them as experiencing chronic homelessness and then get them into a safe haven, I think that's wrong. But to, to go back and look at the larger policy issue, Ben, 0.3% of the city's homeless population comes from the Upper East Side portion of our district. But we only provide housing for 0.1% of the city's homeless population. So I would also tell that person, you know, we're gonna respond, we're gonna do empathetic outreach, but also join us. Join us in advocating for more permanent supportive housing in our district. I live 500 feet from permanent supportive housing run by the Doe Fund. Join us in supporting that safe haven that I supported on the community board on East 91st Street. Join us in getting involved in our East Side Task Force on homeless outreach and services. And then we need to build an infrastructure, Ben, of actually providing housing and direct services, leading with empathy in a non-police way on homelessness. Just to take a second, Ben, on, on, on quality of life more generally, I believe I'm running. Yeah, the last few seconds. I, I hope that we'll go to billyfreeland.com/policies, check out our sanitation plan. I think it's the biggest, boldest, most ambitious plan for cleaning up our streets in this race. I'm really proud of it. And I know Chris just wishes he had given me the shout-out I deserve.
All right, moving on to Rebecca. I just want to say, you know, I know this question, the development question, I think, you know, Marco made a good point on this. It's very hard to answer these questions in a minute and a half. Debates are only, you know, this is an hour and a half. We're trying to touch on a lot. So, you know, these are just for some, some thoughts, and it's important for, for voters to hear those thoughts. But obviously, there's, as Billy just pointed out and others have, there's also other ways to find where you, where you all stand on things and ideas you have. But, but hopefully, we're also offering people a thoughtful discussion to an extent here in this debate. Rebecca, go ahead.
When my office gets that call, excuse me, when my office gets that call, my staff will know that we're gonna lead with compassion and empathy. We will not be calling police, because police should not be responding to homeless outreach. It doesn't help the system. Quite honestly, it hurts those in need. We will be working with social workers. We'll be working with professionals that, and nonprofits that can help get people off the street into safe havens. But a shelter, a safe haven, is not a long-term solution for our neighbors experiencing homelessness. A long-term solution is building housing here in our community. I'm proud to have also supported the housing going up on 91st Street, but it's more than that. We need to build housing specifically for our neighbors experiencing homelessness. And then we need to overlay other services on that. We need to overlay healthcare, mental health support, education support, rental assistance, once we get them into an apartment. We also need to offer job readiness and placement, education support. To me, it's about, once again, leading with compassion and empathy. And I, as a person, I think, what would I want if I was in that situation? How would I want someone to approach me? What would I want to hear in that moment? And that's what my office will always bring. We will always lead with compassion and empathy. And again, we need to get police out of these response calls. We cannot have a police officer going up to a neighbor experiencing homelessness. That's not the help they need. They're never gonna be able to offer the help that they need. And then when it comes to quality of life issues, we need to build out what quality of life means. Yes, it's sanitation. I'm proud to have worked with Teamsters Local 813, 831, and Labor's Local 108. So I could talk a lot about things like containerized storage to get the bags off our street and cut down on the number of rats we see. But it's also about things like accessibility. It's about things like parks. It's about things like education. It's about things like vacant small businesses. It's about things like our streetscape, quite honestly. Quality of life is an, an issue that we need to look at much more broadly. And as Chris said, not allow it to be a dog whistle for more conservative elements in our neighborhood.
Thank you. Julie.
Well, the first thing I would do is call the city's Department of Social Services, who I've worked with for a long time, or call one of the shelters in our community directly, like Women in Need, to get supportive services. And in terms of the homelessness issue writ large, there are currently over 12 city agencies that are dealing with homelessness. They're largely siloed. This makes no sense. And honestly, we need to really overhaul this to truly address the problem. We also have a $3 billion shelter budget. And if I was in the council, I would work on those contracts to ensure that there are performance stipulations, review of those contracts. Because if we're allocating city money to not-for-profits, we have to make sure that they are performing. Uh, I also believe we need to go into the Thrive budget, a one point two billion dollar program, and we need to make uh serious cuts there. And lastly, on sanitation, I'm proud to have the endorsement of the sanitation union because I've stood up to the drastic cuts. Over a hundred million dollars was cut from the city council budget last year in sanitation. Four hundred workers were let go. We need to restore those cuts. Um, we need to have containerized garbage. We need to have composting. We need to have recycling. And these are issues that I'm hearing um from the community. No one wants to see trash all over our streets like we do right now. And that's largely because of these draconian cuts that were made last year. So I would fight very hard to restore those cuts to the district.
And since you mentioned it, and this is often a bit of a of a political issue, the Thrive NYC program from the city, having, having worked in the de Blasio administration, as you've outlined in in on several fronts, you have perhaps a little bit more insights into this. What's, what's the real problem there? It seems like, um, you know, they haven't, they haven't been measuring outcomes well. Uh, you know, there isn't always a great uh indication of of the sort of bang for the buck in these programs. But the money does seem to be going towards mental health services around the city. What, what's your sense of what the problem is there that you would look to move?
Sure. It's, it's a great question, Ben. No one is saying we should not be funding mental health services. On the contrary, we should be doing more funding for mental health services, but you have to have data metrics to prove it. I've run three city agencies. Uh, all of our programs had very strong data metrics. You can't have a situation with Thrive where, for example, dealing with postpartum depression, which is a very serious issue. They were supposed to help over fifteen thousand moms. Very few have been helped. But all of the different elements of Thrive, if you really go into the data, very few of them actually have the data metrics to support it. This is why earlier I talked about oversight and investigation. We need to have O and I come in and truly audit Thrive.
Thank you. Kim.
Yeah, thank you. You know, first of all, I I just want to say it feels really good to be surrounded by people who are leading on this issue with compassion. I know a lot of times homelessness in some of these debates can be um a political football for a lot of people. And it's, it's nice to to talk about it with compassion and humanity. Um, I think that is in part because we have great leaders already in this district, people like Liz Kruger and and Ben Kalos, who have more than once spoken up in favor of supportive housing and and housing homeless in our district. We have a wind shelter on my block on Ninety-First Street. Um, Billy mentioned the the Doe Fund housing on eighty-sixth Street, and we also have new supportive housing that's gonna be going up on the other side of Ninety-First Street. Um, in in terms of getting those calls, look, I I think all of us have been making calls to voters in the district and and we run into folks all the time talking about these issues. I would handle it, I think, the same way, which is to very calmly and compassionately talk about the issue and explain that when we talk about homeless people on our street, these are our neighbors who are in our community, who find themselves in a bad situation, and it's our responsibility to help them. I would reach out to homeless outreach teams, try to get them the services that they need, try to get them into a city program. If there are other services that they need, be it mental health services or drug rehabilitation services, I would like to try to get those services for them as well. But fundamentally, we need to get people in homes. I'm a big supporter of of getting people in homes as quickly as possible. So I talked earlier about removing barriers. It means getting folks help as soon as they need it, as soon as they first come into contact with the homeless outreach team. Um, it means really uh allocating resources to housing vouchers to help folks who are down on their luck be able to afford an apartment. Um, and then cracking down on the discrimination. I talked about this briefly at the beginning, but at the end of the day, you know, those housing vouchers don't mean anything if we have landlords who refuse to accept them. Um, really briefly on quality of life, I I will just say that since the pandemic, obviously, we have seen funds cut for sanitation for our parks, for so many things that make our community so wonderful. Obviously, we need to restore funding to those things immediately. Um, you know, I I talk a lot about how government can and should be a force for good in people's lives, and that means funding all of these public goods, whether they are libraries or public parks, our public transportation, making sure that those things in our neighborhood that are there for everybody and not just for the wealthy are invested in and are taken care of. And that is what I would do as a city council member.
Thank you. And Tricia.
Yeah, the scenario that you pointed out is is one that's very real and and near and dear to me as a social worker, as somebody who has uh worked in uh with Congresswoman Carolyn Maloney's office. I did get those calls. Um, and I, and I would say that I would handle it the same way, which is relying on social workers. I would have a social worker on staff uh to partner with our nonprofit organizations, with our homeless outreach teams to to provide, as others have said, a compassionate and dignified response. Um, ultimately, it's not just about working with our nonprofits. It's about seeing the underlying issue here, which is providing permanent, deeply supportive and and affordable housing for all New Yorkers, which we are failing to do right now, and and I certainly am supportive of it. Onto the larger question of quality of life issues. Yes, I have a little bit of a reputation, which I am very grateful uh to and proud to have of talking about the garbage a lot, um, and talking about our sewage and talking about compost in a way that I I wish I could have an entire uh forum just talking about these issues. It would make me so happy. Um, but the truth is, is that I I want to pick up the garbage. I want to update our sewage system. I want to build a new high school. I want to rethink our streets and and our open space. I want to create a safe and accessible parks. I wanted uh to prioritize pedestrian safety. All of these issues are generally cast as quality of life. But I agree with Chris when he says that, you know, we need to rethink how we talk, how we talk about this. Because it's, I would argue, they're the issues that that really make communities worth living in. Uh, and at the end of the day, if we're gonna take care of our families, if we're gonna take care of our seniors, if we're gonna take care of our small businesses, we need a council member and a council, a city council that's going to realize that these are, these are critical issues uh in every neighborhood. And I'm, I'm really excited to be, to be working on those issues in the council.
All right. Thank you all for for thoughtful answers there. I know that was, um, like I said, a complicated question, tricky question, especially in a minute and a half. Um, but everybody put some uh thoughtful uh comments there. So let's do a few minutes of lightning round, yes, no, very short answer uh questions here, and then we're gonna move to closing statements in just a few minutes. We're talking today, taping this debate on April fourteenth. Uh, Billy, should New York City schools be fully reopened right now for in-person learning uh for all students? Yes or no?
No, but I support September for reopen.
Rebecca.
No, I support September for reoption reopening. We need to ensure we have more vaccine for reopen.
I think we can reopen them safely. I'm project endorsement of the U F T and certainly working with the U F T and Dewey. I think we can have a measured reopening.
Kim.
Uh, yes, as long as we can do it safely and within CDC guidelines.
Tricia.
Yes, I think that with with increased safety measures, increased testing, following CDC dark guidelines.
Chris.
Broken record. Nope, September.
Marco.
Uh, I think, yes, uh, uh, follow the CDC regulations. And I think
Right, so starting, starting this time uh with Julie, do you support uh some new housing development on underutilized Nycha land, sometimes referred to as infill development in Nycha? Yes or no?
No.
Kim.
No.
Tricia.
No.
Chris.
No.
Marco.
Absolutely, yes. We need to create because it's underdeveloped those sites. Thank you.
Bill, Billy.
No.
And Rebecca.
Absolutely not. Never.
Okay, let's start with Tricia on this one. Is member deference on land use matters in the city council a a blanket uh policy that you would take to defer to the member whose district a project was in in terms of supporting their decision on a land use matter coming before the city council? So do you believe in a strong blanket member deference policy on land use matters? Tricia.
Definitely not.
Uh, Chris.
Absolutely not.
Marco.
No.
Billy.
No.
Rebecca.
No, it harms workers and communities.
Julie.
No.
And Kim.
No, I do not support member deference.
What is one city council committee you'd like to chair at at some point, if possible? Uh, we'll start this time with Chris.
Housing.
Marco.
Land use.
Billy.
Environmental protection.
Rebecca.
Housing and buildings.
Julie, I think we've heard your answer already.
Yes, oversight and investigations.
Kim.
Uh, sanitation.
And Tricia.
Housing and buildings.
Okay, last couple here. How long have you lived in the city council district? Uh, let's start with Billy.
Four years.
Rebecca.
Eight years.
Julie.
Eight years.
Kim.
Twelve years.
Tricia.
Sorry, uh, I'm doing the math since since twenty sixteen.
Okay, about five years. Uh, Chris.
I'd have to do the math too. It's about the same as Tricia. I think it was the beginning of two thousand seventeen, but I have to go check my lease.
Okay, Marco.
More than twenty-five years.
All right, I think I got to everybody there. Last two, who is your favorite right now in the Democratic primary for New York City mayor? Let's start with Kim.
Oh, come on, man. Um, uh, I I don't know my first choices yet. I have a lot of respect for Scott Stringer, though, who has done a lot of work and he's just
Tricia.
I haven't made a final decision. Like Scott, like Maya, like Diane.
Chris.
Diane Morales.
Marco.
Scott, absolutely.
Billy.
The election will hold today, April fourteenth. I'm ranking Diane Morales one, Stringer two.
Rebecca.
I gotta go with my black turtleneck wearing woman. Diane Morales is my first choice and Maya Wiley is my second choice.
And Julie.
I've worked with um almost all the candidates running and I have very positive relationships with all of them, so I'm still making up my mind.
All right, uh, the only one not to name somebody, Julie?
Yeah, I'm still making up my mind. I've worked with all of them, so I'm not, I haven't, we still have a little ways to go on the race.
All right, last lightning round question. If you uh were filling out your ballot today, I assume you're all putting yourself number one, but it's ranked choice voting, as some of you just indicated in the mayoral race. So who's, who are you putting number two in this very primary here, starting with Marco?
None.
No one?
No one.
No one. Marco, I hope you didn't set a bad precedent here. Billy.
Rebecca Lamorte.
Rebecca.
Billy Freeland.
Julie.
Um, I'm, am making up my mind. I would absolutely tend to support another woman in the race, given the dearth of women uh running. I think we have a great field here, and I haven't made up my mind.
Kim.
Yeah, Julie stole my answer. I I don't know yet, but definitely uh want another woman.
Tricia.
Haven't made it my mind yet, but I will be using the ranked choice voting system.
As people should. Chris, lastly.
Rebecca Lamorte, but I plan to rank most of my opponents. I think we need to make good use of ranked choice. I'm filling every slot.
Five, everybody. You can rank up to five, so folks should be prepared for that. All right, closing statements. Let's go here. So let's start, uh, let's start with Marco. Go ahead, Marco. One minute.
Thank you. Thank you for listening to me. I presented to you all real problems that are facing our community and real solutions. In brief, we need a sensitive contextual development to reduce the great disparities in the city. We need to balance the job creation. By reducing discretionary action in our community, we can protect the character of our neighborhood. On the other hand, and this investment uh neighborhoods creating more air rights benefits and other tax incentives. Therefore, all neighborhood will have some opportunity to grow within a more equitable city for up with opportunities for all. Consequently, I pledge that I will vote in our city council as a voice of our people and work hard to make our uh, make us the vibrant, safe neighborhood that we can be. To do that, I need your vote. For more information, go to my uh web, marcotamayoNYC dot com. Thank you.
Thank you. Billy.
Well, thank you again, Ben. Uh, look, I've, I've got a minute, and here's my bottom message to voters. Uh, this race is not just about uh bringing our community together. This race is not just about uh the future of our city. This race is about, are we going to lead with big, bold ideas to deliver the change that we truly need? And I believe that I'm running on the type of ideas I think are going to turn the page from the last eight years in our city. Ideas to wrest control back from developers and have real people-powered, community-driven development. Ideas to support our mom and pop small businesses that have been struggling for so long. Ideas to make sure that New York City is a leader in fighting climate change and building the type of open space and transportation network that I think we all believe we so desperately need. I've been running a race where I've been rejecting money from real estate developers. I've been rejecting money from their lobbyists. I'm proud to be running a people-powered campaign. And if you're interested in joining us, I hope you'll visit my website, billyfreeland.com. Love to see you on the campaign trail. And thank you again, Ben and MNN for hosting us today.
Thank you. Rebecca.
Thank you so much, Ben, for today's great debate. Thank you, Manhattan Neighborhood Network. I'm Rebecca Lamorte, and I'm running to represent our community and bring about real change when it comes to housing, disability, racial, and economic justice. I've led movements before, be it for unionized workers in a variety of industries, be it for disability justice in our community and throughout the city, or be it in Carl Sherr's Park every night at seven P M, where our community turns out to support Black Lives Matter and defunding the police. I'm not afraid to lead movements, and I'm ready to get down to City Hall and fight for this change and bring about real revolutionary change in these areas. I'm also proud to be endorsed by over a dozen organizations, from my brothers and sisters in labor at a variety of unions to community groups and activist organizations, and the list is growing. So please go to my website, rebekalamort.com, learn about our movement, join our movement, and on June twenty-second, vote for me to bring about real change here in our community.
Thank you. Julie.
Well, thank you, Eminem and Ben, for hosting this important debate. This is the most important election in our city's history. We are literally at a crossroads. We can continue our recovery and we can reach new heights. And I believe this particular moment calls for strong, experienced leadership in a crisis. And I'm so proud of the work I've done as a seven-year community board chair, as a three-time city commissioner, as commissioner of consumer affairs for the city, commissioner of media and entertainment for the city, and as a city census director. And I'm very proud of the broad and diverse coalition of endorsements we have from the Central Labor Council, representing three hundred unions, the Teachers Union, D C thirty-seven, thirty-two B J, the Hotel Trades, um, the Nurses Union, so many others, elected officials, and dozens and dozens of community leaders. I hope I can count on your support, and to learn more about our campaign or get involved, please visit julieforNYC dot com. And the word for is spelled out. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Kim.
Thank you so much to Ben and Eminem for hosting us here today. Uh, my name is Kim Moskowitz-Tolo. I'm a journalist and advocate and an activist. Uh, I'm proud of the work that I have done here in the community as a district leader since twenty fifteen and as an activist fighting uh to win great progressive victories for great candidates all over the state. I've been endorsed by great leaders like State Senator Liz Kruger, Assembly Member Rebecca Seiright, State Senator Jose Serrano, State Senator Jessica Ramos, and Zephyr Teachout. And I think it is because they have all worked with me and seen the the work that I have done in pushing for true progressive values here in this city. As I said before, I have never worked for an elected official or a government agency. I've spent twenty years working in journalism, trying to speak truth to power. And I believe that what we need in this city is a true independent voice, not more failed leadership. That is what I am hoping to bring to the city council, to bring a journalist's eye to City Hall. I hope that you will join me in this campaign and to learn more about me and the race and how you can get involved, you can uh visit votkim dot N Y C. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Tricia.
Thank you again for putting this event together today. I, you know, I've spent my career fighting for uh the East Side and Roosevelt Islanders. I believe that's why I'm being supported by Congress, by so many local leaders, including Congresswoman Carolyn Maloney, State Senator Liz Kruger, Assemblywoman Rebecca Seiright, East River Democratic Club, the Jewish Vote, and so many outstanding organizations and and local leaders. I, you know, you know, I'm trying to break a lot of barriers here with my campaign. I would be the first person of color to ever represent our district, city, state, or federal level. The first Japanese-American ever elected in New York State would be bringing a working mother's perspective, a social work perspective, to the city council, something that I think is is desperately needed. But at the end of the day, the reason why I'm running is because I love this community. Uh, these are my blocks. This is my neighborhood. This is my family. And I'm running to make sure that our community has a strong voice in the next council. I hope that you'll join our campaign. I hope that you'll join our our broad coalition. And you can learn more about me by going to my website. It's triciaforNY dot N Y C. And I'm looking forward to seeing you on June twenty-second.
And Chris.
Thanks for hosting us, Ben. Uh, I'm running because I believe that we need a leader with courage, compassion, and a sense of community. I believe that I have both the experience and skills to lead with competence and with unity. Um, we're seeing a social fabric torn apart as we enter a incredibly difficult time of rebuilding. And I'd like to see us come together as a community and build with equity. Uh, I also am one of only two people here today who carries the endorsement of a sitting council member because of the skills and experience that I bring to this work. Uh, I I look forward to serving our community and building upon the work of Councilmember Kalos, who I think has done a fantastic job. But uh, as we exit one of the most trying times in the history of our state, we need a steady hand in the new leadership coming in to ensure that that we build back better. So thank you very much for having us here today, and you can learn more about me at sosaforyC dot com.
All right, and that is the last word from the candidates. You've heard from seven Democrats running in the city council District Five. Primary Billy Freeland, Rebecca Lamorte, Julie Menon, Kim Moskowitz-Tolo, Tricia Shimamura, Chris Sosa, and Marco Tamayo. Thank you so much to all of you for being here. I want to say to voters, I hope this debate has been helpful, and I also apologize that we couldn't get to everything we need to get to in a debate like this. Many issues we didn't touch on, but of course, there are other debates and formats for that. And I encourage you to get to know the candidates and their platforms better as the race proceeds and we head towards the June primary. Thank you for watching. Represent NYC election coverage from Gotham Gazette and Manhattan Neighborhood Network. I hope this debate was helpful to you as you make your choices when it comes time to vote. The primaries are coming up in June, and remember, they will feature ranked choice voting.